So I'll begin with introductions. I am Casey Swallow, I'm the moderator, and I am the arbiter of the rules of debate. On my left is our town council and town clerk, Michael McCarron, and on my right is the Board of Selectmen, Glenn Kemper, the chair, Joseph Anderson, and David Archibald. And seated below, the DS on the left, is the Finance Committee, the chair. Sherri Gadd is not with us tonight, so Kimberly Codere will be doing the honors. She's the vice chair and the secretary. Carol Winch, Scott Falavalida, Peter Phillips, Nicholas Delena, and Michael Bertino is an ex-officio member of the Finance Committee. I've already made a mistake. We have rules. The articles constitute the agenda for the meeting, and no business may be brought before the meeting unless it is covered by an article. I will read each article, and then I will ask for the recommendation of the Finance Committee. A motion must be made, hopefully written, before any discussion can take place. The article is not the motion. A positive motion can be debated, it can be amended, and it is voted on by hand, voice, or counted vote. A negative motion, that is a motion to take no action, cannot be debated. The form of debate is free and open discussion. You may speak only when recognized by the moderator, and please, 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 use the microphone. The acoustics in this room are dreadful, and if you think you have a nice loud voice, and it'll carry, you are mistaken. People will not know what you're saying. So assuming that what you have to say is important, I encourage you all to please rise and use the microphone so everyone in the hall can hear you. And if I feel like you're not being heard, I'll tell you, because what you're saying is important. Please limit your remarks when you're speaking to three minutes, and the spirit of free and open debate means that there will be no personal attacks, comments cannot be addressed to specific individuals, there shall be no cross-examination of individuals. All questions must be asked through the moderator and directed to the moderator, and only the moderator can ask the opinion of town council. Now, it is our custom in West Newbury to discourage a motion to call the question. A motion to call the question generally slows things down, since it is a motion and has to be voted on. However, the moderator will retain the right to move things along when necessary by using some encouraging words to speed us toward some sort of a vote. When we get to the line item budget, I will explain how that works. It's slightly different from the rest of the warrant. And finally, the importance of our gathering. Our open town meeting in West Newbury is the legislative form of our town meeting government. Our power is the power of the purse. If we don't appropriate the money, it can't be done. So that is how we actually influence decisions that are made in the town, from the power of the purse. So this is a serious business, and I encourage you to take it seriously. So we will begin with the annual town meeting. Now, tonight we have two warrants before us. We have an annual town meeting, and we have a special town meeting. We handle that by opening the annual town meeting and dispensing with some of the business on the annual town meeting warrant, and then recessing the annual town meeting, taking up the special town meeting until it's finished. Then when we adjourn the special town meeting, we reopen the annual town meeting and finish that one, and that's what we'll do tonight. So I will be starting with the annual town meeting. Article 1 is actually an election, which will be held next Monday. Next Monday. I encourage you all to vote at the election, it's important. There are quite a number of positions that are open, but we won't address that article this evening. Article 2 is to hear and act upon the reports of town officers and committees, and the first report is from Mr. Kemper.
Just looking for a microphone. This is part of our annual town meeting. That we present a person with Citizen of the Year. And we are lucky, like every year, this is actually one of the nicer things, or I look forward to doing this, because it shows appreciation to somebody that puts in a lot of work, hard work, and devotes themselves, takes a lot of time away from their families, generally monetary also, to devote so people in this town can have a better life. In this year, we got a nomination, and it just was, it hit me when I got it and said, why hasn't this person been nominated before, or why this person hasn't been Citizen of the Year before? And then I started looking into it and talking to people, and we could have had, I don't know, 100 people up here tonight, from students that she's helped, that a art program that I think is the best in the state, that she has helped develop and thrive and devote her life to. I mean, there's this, do you mind if I put this down just for a sec? Just, I mean, I could go on. I mean, I even got something in the mail today, that was, that's sponsored by the Pawtucket Arts Foundation, that they're going to be having a choral instrument in theater and visual arts. That's something that's been thriving because of her leadership. This individual is responsible, not for only these things, and obviously the committee, but she's worked tirelessly over the years. I started getting involved with it back 21 years ago, and she was part of it. Raised over hundreds of, $100,000 to bring arts programs to the community, funded over $25,000 of grants for theater, music, and visual arts education throughout the district, tens of thousands of dollar, excuse me, dollars, for scholarships for talented Pawtucket graduates pursuing the arts. Another initiative they had was $30,000 for seating and lighting and acoustical upgrades at the auditorium. I could go on forever, but I know we want to get into this budget and these wonderful articles, but I want to personally thank Jen Leonard-Silis for her dedication. She started because her kids were interested, and she still added, even though I don't think she's had a kid in the district for, I don't know, how long, but her love to bring arts to the community, and her art, and her love to have our kids thrive in any type of art is just, I mean, you've left your mark with a lot of kids. I mean, a lot of kids wanted to come up here tonight, because they wouldn't have been where they are today if it wasn't for you and the program that's down there in Pawtucket. I personally want to thank you, and the town thanks you.
We were going to have a report from the Pawtucket Regional School Committee, however, Jill Ikors, who is with us, is not feeling well and can't really speak. So she's available to ask questions, and Chris Well was not able to make it to the meeting either, so there is no report. This is a little bit awkward to ask questions without hearing any sort of a report, but let's defer this until we start to discuss the school budget, and then if people do have questions, perhaps Ms. Ikors can answer the questions. The other reports are, the reporters have requested that they give their report just prior to the article, which they're interested in, and so that's customary, and as usual, we will leave this article open for the duration of the meeting if any other reports become available. And so we'll move on with the warrant, unless there's someone else who wants to make a report at this time. The next article on the warrant is the line item budget, and so at this point, we're going to recess the annual town meeting, so that we can pick up the special town meeting. So I will call the special.
Point of order, this special town meeting is called at 8:00. Point of the.
I don't have any time on here at all, do you? Oh, that's the old one, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. Down there, yeah, let's see it, okay. All right, there's been a point of order, that the warrant says that the special town meeting will commence at 8:00 PM. We will do the line item budget and then take up the special town meeting. The line item budget is found in the Finance Committee report. The way the line item budget is handled is that I will read each line. If you wish to discuss a particular line in the line item budget, please call "hold" very loudly, so that we can all hear you, and I will so note. Then after we've gone through every line in the line item budget, we will go back and pick up those lines on which there was a "hold." Each line in the line item budget constitutes a motion, and the motion on the floor, as I read the line item budget, will be the Finance Committee recommendation. So if you wish to either make a change to that or discuss it, you'll want to call "hold." If you're happy with the Finance Committee recommendation, we can just pass them over. So we'll begin. General Government, line 1, the moderator. Salary and Wages, the Finance Committee recommendation is $200. Expenses, the Finance Committee recommends $60. Selectmen. Selectmen's Stipend, the Finance Committee recommends $66,721.
No, 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 $3.
Oh, I'm sorry. That does make a difference.
Thank you.
The Finance Committee actually recommends $3. Salary and Wages, the Finance Committee recommends $66,721. Temporary Pay, Finance Committee recommends $1. Overtime, Finance Committee recommends $1,493. Professional Technical Service, the Finance Committee recommends $10,000. Expenses, the Finance Committee recommends $8,100. Under the Finance Committee. Salary, Finance Committee recommends $1,800. Expenses, $2,000. Reserve Fund, the Finance Committee recommends $60,000. Under the Board of Assessors. Board of Assessor's Salary, the Finance Committee recommends $3,000. Salary, $103,892. Expense, the Finance Committee recommends $40,400. Vehicle Allowance, the Finance Committee recommends $1,500. Under the Finance Department. Salary and Wages, Finance Committee recommendation is $273,394. Annual Audit, the Finance Committee recommends $20,000. Tax Title and Foreclosure, $2,000. 1910 Building Technology Expense, the Finance Committee recommends $35,744. 1910 Building Telephone Expense, FinCom recommends $8,000. 1910 Building Postage Expense, the recommendation is $13,056. Expenses, the Finance Committee recommends $36,400. Is this a point of order? Line 6, Special Counsel. The Finance, Legal Fees, the Finance Committee recommends $1. Line 7, Town Clerk, Town Council. Salary and Wages, the recommendation is $102,786. Preservation of Town Records, the recommendation is no appropriation. Operation of Facsimile Machine Photocopiers, Finance Committee recommends $4,750. Expenses, the Finance Committee recommends $9,475. Under Line 8, Board of Registars' Elections. Town Clerk Compensation, the Finance Committee recommends $150. Salary and Wages, $4,845. Expenses, the recommendation is $6,100. Line 9, Conservation Commission. Salary and Wages, the Finance Committee recommends $24,998. Expenses, $3,100. Vehicle Allowance, the Finance Committee recommends $600. Line 10, Planning Board. Salary and Wages, the Finance Committee recommends $39,855. Expenses, Finance Committee recommends $3,000. MVPC Assessment, the recommendation is $1,436. Under Line 11, Board of Appeals. Salary and Wages, Finance Committee recommends $1,000. Expenses, $500. Line 12, Open Space and Recreation Committee. The Finance Committee recommends $750. Public Safety, Line 14, the Police Department. Salary.
Number 13.
You're right.
Number 13.
Line 13, Cable Advisory Committee. Expenses, the Finance Committee recommends $1. Now, Public Safety. Line 14, Police Department. Salary and Wages, the Finance Committee recommends $759,288. Overtime, Finance Committee recommends $35,000. Expenses, Finance Committee recommends $90,000. Capital Outlight, Finance Committee recommends no appropriation. Line 15, Fire Department. Alarms, Finance Committee recommends $78,720. Drills, Finance Committee recommends $24,648. Miscellaneous Fire Department Wages, $21,648. Administration, the recommendation is $24,127. Fire Protection Fees, Finance Committee recommends $64,758. Fire Alarm and Communications, $9,500. Expenses, $39,600. Capital Outlay, the Finance Committee recommends $44,782. Medical Exams, $3,000. Under Ambulance Service. Ambulance Retainer, the Finance Committee recommends no appropriation. Line 17, Inspection Department. Salary and Wages, the Finance Committee recommends $110,481. Expenses, $9,490. Vehicle Allowance, Finance Committee recommends $4,980. Line 18, Emergency Management Agency. Salary and Wages, the Finance Committee recommends $7,117. Expenses, $3,265. Under the Animal Control Officer. Salary and Expense, the Finance Committee recommends no appropriation. Under Expenses, the Finance Committee recommends $21,500. Line 20, Harbor Master. Salary and Wages, the Finance Committee recommends $3,000. Expenses, $3,000. Wages and Expense, the Finance Committee recommends no appropriation. Line 21, Public Safety Dispatch. Salary and Wages, the Finance Committee recommends $205,597. Overtime, Finance Committee recommends $15,028. Expenses, Finance Committee recommends $21,910. Under Education. Line 22, Education. Pawtucket Minimum Contribution. Finance Committee recommends $5,147,674. Pawtucket Other Assessment, the Finance Committee recommends $1,389,129. Pawtucket Capital Assessment, the recommendation is $139,140. Page School Phase 2, Finance Committee recommends $421,285. Whittier Minimum Contribution, the Finance Committee recommends $217,106. Whittier Other Assessment, the Finance Committee recommends $31,377. Whittier Capital Assessment, the Finance Committee recommends $13,250. Essex North Shore Regional Voc Tech, Essex Aggie, the Finance Committee recommends $20,750. Under the Department of Public Works. Line 23, DPW. Salary and Wages, the Finance Committee recommends $412,951. Overtime Wages, $10,404. Snow and Ice Removal, the Finance Committee recommends $150,000. Town Buildings and Operating Expenses, the Finance Committee recommends $185,400. Town Building Improvements, the recommendation is $55,500. Children's Castle Operating Expense, the Finance Committee recommends no appropriation. Road Improvement Program, the Finance Committee recommends $70,000. Highway Sidewalk and Trees, the Finance Committee recommends $115,000. Vehicle Allowance, the.
Hold, sir. You skipped Children's Castle Operating Expenses. Can Children's Castle Building Repair?
Okay, we'll go back up to Children's Castle. Operating Expense, Finance Committee recommends $16,000. Children's Castle Building Repairs, the Finance Committee recommends no appropriation. Road Improvement Program, the Finance Committee recommends $70,000. Highway Sidewalk and Trees, $115,000. Vehicle Allowance, $6,000. Expenses, the Finance Committee recommends $4,000. Parks and Playground Expenses, Finance Committee recommends $15,000. Road Machinery Expense, $49,000. ATM and STM, Finance Committee recommends no appropriation. Street Lighting, Finance Committee recommends $13,000. Under Human Services. Line 24, Board of Health. Salary and Wages, the Finance Committee recommends $101,977. Newburyport Health Center, $5,500. Waste Collection, the Finance Committee recommends $314,900. Hazardous Waste Collection, Finance Committee recommends $2,500. Expenses, the recommendation is $10,915. Line 25, Council on Aging. Salary and Wages, the Finance Committee recommends $54,051. Expenses, the Finance Committee recommends $17,000. Under Line 26, Veterans. Rental CL Car Post, Finance Committee recommends $300. Soldiers Grave Expenses, Finance Committee recommends $2,600. Assessment, $19,030. Northern Essex Veteran Services Benefits, the Finance Committee recommends $9,355. Memorial Day Expense, $600. Under Culture and Recreation. Line 27, Library. Salary and Wages, the Finance Committee recommends $232,237. Under Expenses, the Finance Committee recommends $31,481. Under Books and Periodicals, the recommendation is $62,000. Line 28, Recreation. Under Parks and Recreation Expenses, the Finance Committee recommends $5,700. Mill Pond Operating Expense, $4,450. Bandstand Operating Expense, $3,000. Line 29, Cultural Council Expenses, the Finance Committee recommends $100. Line 30, Historical Commission. Expenses, the Finance Committee recommends $500. Debt Service. Line 31, Debt Service. Maturing Debt, the Finance Committee recommends $620,000. Interest and Pay Downs on Long/Short Term Debt, the Finance Committee recommends $64,000. Under Benefits. Line 32. Essex County Retirement Fund Assessment, the Finance Committee recommends $494,917. Line 33, Unemployment Compensation. Expense, the Finance Committee recommends $1. Line 34, Employees Health Insurance. Expenses, the Finance Committee recommends $316,652. OPEBGF, $1. Line 35, Medicare Insurance. FICA. Expenses, the Finance Committee recommends $39,800. Line 36, Insurance and Bonds. Expenses, the Finance Committee recommends $165,000. That takes us to the end of the line item budget. I heard only one "hold," which is, under Culture and Recreation. Line 27, the Library. Salary and Wages. The motion on the floor is to appropriate $232,237, is their discussion.
Hello. I'm Alex Garelnek. I'm a trustee at the library, and I just wanted to speak a moment to explain why it was that we asked for this increase. It's an increase in the salary line item that will be used to pay present employees of the library when they work extra hours to cover for other staff members who are on vacation, who are sick, and also to help us cover our Saturday hours. And I'll try to explain briefly why it is we need more money. The library's open 51 hours a week. We're required to have two staff members there every time we're open. We have seven staff members. Two of them are full-time, five of them are part-time. Add it together, we have the equivalent of four and a half staff members. One of the full-time is the library director, Susan Bab, and her position is basically an administrative position. She does all the scheduling, the budgeting, the bookkeeping, the managing the bills, the purchasing, the book purchasing, a very large job, participating in the program, fulfilling all the state requirements and the Merrimack Valley Library Consortium requirements, and also overseeing our building, which is fairly large. Fortunately, she doesn't have to actually do the work. Last year, she successfully completed a long-term, a plan, a five-year long-term plan, and you have to follow the state requirements, and if it is accepted by the state, you're then allowed to apply for federal and state grants, and it was accepted, and she's presently writing a grant under that program. Kate Gove, the children's librarian, has similar administrative responsibilities, plus creating and running the extensive children's program that we have, ordering all the children's books, et cetera. The remaining staff, five members, constitute two and a half full-time positions, and they do virtually everything else, the day-to-day running of the library, all the circulation, the reshelving of books, the processing of the hundreds of books that come in each week from, through interlibrary loan. The, and also, one of them does all of the managing of our website and all our social media. Another one is developing a tween and teen program, something we felt we did not have, and we needed to try to encourage the kids who had enjoyed the children's programming to continue using the library. to continue using the library. Then, they also, the most important, I guess, task for the people at the circulation desk is dealing with the public, which is more complex now because we have not just books, CDs, DVDs, but we have a lot of databases. Most of the reference material is on databases. And they, people require help with that. We're hoping to get, we're planning to get some devices like Kindles and stuff that people can borrow or use in the library, and we're gonna, they're gonna need more assistance with that. Each week, we average nearly 1,000 people coming into the library. Each week, we circulate at least close to 2,500 pieces, you know, material, pieces of either books, CDs, et cetera. The money we're asking for does not add any staff, it doesn't increase any individual staff members' particular hours. All it does is allow them to work to cover people who are on vacation. Our, the vacation time of the present staff is 17 weeks out of the year. Nearly a third of the year, somebody is on vacation. So it makes it difficult when you have a limited number of people to draw from. When Susan Bab arrived two years ago as the librarian, we specifically asked her to evaluate the staffing needs and the hours and to streamline work where we could. And she has done that. We also wanted to be sure, and this really concerned us, that the people who were working were working only the hours for which they were paid. Because consistently, people have filled in, they simply don't take vacation because they're concerned about fellow staff members, or they fill in on a voluntary basis. And we felt that wasn't fair. We have an incredible staff with a lot of experience. We love them at the library, and I know a lot of you love them too. And we felt it was only fair that they should be paid for the work that was required of them. Finally, we looked at other libraries in Massachusetts that have similar circulations. Many, many, most of those libraries are in towns much larger than we are, towns with three or four times our population. Some of those libraries have staffs, full-time staffs of 10 or 12 people. Most of them have full-time staffs of six or seven people. We have four and a half. So I guess that would be, that's basically our reasoning. I hope you'll consider it. But finally, I'd just like to say one quick word to thank Gary, Bill, and Brian, who do the maintenance of the library, who just have always worked tirelessly for us and have done just a wonderful job. Particularly this year, Brian completed the refurbishing and really replacement of bookshelves in the western front room. And also, we've just had the first phase of our interior painting completed. It looks beautiful. I hope you'll all come by and see it. Thank you.
Okay. The motion on the floor is to appropriate for salary and wages at the library $232,237. Is there further discussion? Not all those in favor, please raise your cards.
I'm afraid I can't hear you when you just-
Did I reflect what she wanted?
Yes. That is the-
I'm sorry, I was not clear. I want to put it back to what you requested.
You didn't make a motion.
No, she did not.
And I'm too late to do it.
No.
Even though it got voted, it got voted.
I made a motion to increase the salary line item by $2,500 over the amount that was recommended.
So what is the amount that you're asking for?
Yeah, it's the original amount. Thank you, sir.
The amount that was requested-
Two hundred, 234,737.
Okay, this is a motion to amend.
Okay.
Okay? The motion is to amend the appropriation from $232,000, $237 to $234,737. So the discussion now is on the amendment.
Okay.
Madam?
Thank you.
Mr. Archibald.
Will that change the expense line item because of the state regulations that a certain percent of the periodicals, will the line item will then have to go up because it's a percentage of the salaries?
We built the budget.
Microphone, please. Just because it's being taped to for home, it'll be on TV. Thank you.
The expense line, the books and periodicals line item in there is based on the amount we requested. So it should be okay, right?
If that's the one you requested.
Yeah, I mean, that allows us to have, to be accredited, essentially.
Did everyone understand that discussion?
Yes.
Okay, fine. Is there any further discussion on the motion to amend? Not all those in favor, please- It's a tough crowd tonight. Okay. Would someone second this motion?
I second.
Okay, they're fine.
Could the Board of Selectmen and the FINCOM please explain why they cut that so that we understand why it was lowered?
Does the FINCOM wish to address that question? No? Does the Board of Selectmen wish to address that question? The FINCOM doesn't wish to address the question, and I can't force them to. So?
The Board of Selectmen tried to make the salary line increases throughout all the departments in the town equal, and this one was beyond the cost of living increase for the other departments.
All vote.
The discussion is still on the motion to amend. Is there any further discussion on the motion to amend? All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. Motion passes. Now we're voting on the motion to appropriate. The motion on the floor is to appropriate $234,737 for library salary and wages. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. It's unanimous. That being the only hold, we're finished with the line item budget except for an omnibus motion to accept.
I move to approve the omnibus budget as amended.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. We have one minute until eight o'clock, so we will recess for one minute, and then I will open the special town meeting. We will open the special town meeting. We are meeting pursuant to a warrant issued by the Selectmen for a special town meeting on April 10th, 2015. Has the town been warned of the business before it?
Yes.
Will the clerk please read the return of service?
Pursuant to the above warrant, to me directed, I hereby notified and warned all the inhabitants of the town of West Newbury who are qualified to vote to meet at the town annex at 379 Main Street at April 27th, 2017 at 8:00 PM. Richard K. Davies, Jr., Constable.
Article one, to hear and act upon requests on the reports of town officers and committees. I'm not aware of anyone who wishes to make a report at this time. Is there anyone who wishes to make a report at this time? We'll leave this article open for the duration of the meeting because there are some reports to come at a later time, and we'll move on to Article two. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $25,000 from the Water Enterprise Fund Free Cash Account to purchase water from the city of Newburyport. Any remaining fund in this account at the end of fiscal year 2015 will close out to the Water Enterprise Fund Free Cash Account. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee voted unanimously to approve this article. This is a transfer to increase the water department's line item to make additional funds available in case they're needed to purchase water from Newburyport. About 64% of the town, or approximately 1,000 customers, uses water department services. Predicting water's purchase costs is difficult because they vary depending upon demand, production from West Newbury Wells, and the need for water system shutdown for maintenance of town facilities.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Knowles.
I move to transfer the sum of $25,000 from the Water Enterprise Fund Free Cash Account to purchase water from the city of Newburyport. Any remaining funds in this account will, at the end of fiscal '15, close out to the Water Enterprise Fund Free Cash Account.
Is there any discussion? Not all those in favor, please raise your cards. I thought he said 16. He said 15? That's correct. I'm sorry, there was some discussion about the motion which said for fiscal '15, which is in fact right. So, all those in favor, please raise your hands. Cards? All those opposed, please raise your cards. It's unanimous. Article three, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $5,000 from the Water Enterprise Fund Free Cash Account to conduct a survey and establish the sidelines from Hilltop Circle to the Craven property for the access road to the Break Hill standpipe. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. The money requested by the water department will cover the cost of a sideline survey on the easement which connects Hilltop Circle to Break Hill. This survey will delineate the path of the easement, allowing for subsequent work to be performed in the correct location.
Mr. Knowles.
I move to transfer the sum of $5,000 from the Water Enterprise Fund Free Cash Account to conduct a survey and establish the sidelines from Hilltop Circle to the town property formerly known as the Craven property for access road to the Break Hill standpipe.
Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. It's unanimous. Article four, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $205,000 for costs associated with potential wellfield development to include unnecessary expenses associated therewith. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. West Newbury is currently unable to meet all of its water needs and purchases about 40% from the city of Newburyport. The Board of Water Commissioners has identified an in-town parcel that may augment our current supply of water. The Finance Committee supports the goal of water independence and believes it is imperative the town explore all options to relieve the high cost of purchasing at full price from Newburyport. In addition to supplementing its one wellfield, the town should also seek to control 100% of its water resources in order to better manage the costs, conservation measures, and water quality decisions that follow. The Board of Water Commissioners and Selectmen propose to fund this initiative using $140,000 from the water department stabilization funds and $65,000 from the town's free cash.
Mr. Knowles.
I move to transfer the sum of $140,000 from the Water Enterprise Fund Free Cash Account and $65,000 from the town free cash account for the costs associated with potential wellfield development to include, but not limited to, a 10-day pump test, preparation and submittal of a request for site exam, BRPWS-17, pump test proposal, BRPWS-19, to install additional test wells, submit test well report, and Water Management Act permit or amendment thereof, and any other reports that may be required by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Solis.
Where's the property that you've identified, please?
Mr. Knowles?
Because of potential purchase of land, we have not identified the property at this point yet.
I'm a big supporter of wellfield development, and I understand about the need to negotiate in secret with real estate deals, but I have a little trouble supporting, spending over $200,000 for a piece of, on, to develop a piece of land if I don't know where it is, because I don't know if I want to develop it or not. So I'm just wondering, Madam Moderator, can you or any of the other officials maybe give an example of another time when we did this in town so that I can make the connection?
I don't have any memory of anything like that. Does anyone else? Mr. Kemper. Yes, Jim.
I don't know any other instances that I could, that would be a good example of this. But I just wanted to say that the Board of Water Commissioners and the Board of Selectmen have been in an executive session on numerous occasions and have gone through previous tests on this particular parcel and gotten results. And we wouldn't be asking you if we didn't think this was viable at this point. I don't think we need to know that, where the land is to support this. I just think that you need to know that we have done our due diligence as the Water Commissioners and the Board of Selectmen to be asking you for this. That's the most, I think, most important part of it, rathering know where the land is. Because it doesn't really matter where the land is if we hadn't done our due diligence. I don't think that would sway you. I don't think we would. And, and of course, it could increase the price and all those sorts of things that would not be beneficial for the town at the end game.
Ms. Selman.
Isn't there, wasn't there drilling on Indian Hill on that piece of land, and the town owns that, down at the very end of Indian Hill that runs into Middle Street?
Are you fishing?
No, I'm, no, no. I'm saying, they're, they were, they were drilling there years ago. It could have been 10 years ago.
But Mrs. Selman, this is-
Looks like a piece of land.
It is a point well taken. It's a question that-
Yeah, because I'm thinking if it's done the same way, and I believe there are one or two wells back there, does anyone remember that? Right. And you don't see anything but a beautiful field. I think one of the things would be the question of, if someone lived across the street in a house and you were drilling, that they wouldn't see something that would, you know, that you wouldn't want to see across the street. So I would give that as an example. If it's done similarly in that way, I drive past it every day, and it's just like a pasture or a field, and it's very beautiful, and no one knows that there's wells back there. So I would like to say, is that basically the way it would be done?
Another question, or something similar? Well, there's no, there's actually, ladies and gentlemen, there's no need to ask a question. I mean, you made a perfectly good statement.
Okay, okay.
Does the due diligence include looking at the zone that would have to be protected around this parcel? Does the parcel encompass all of the area that the well would draw upon?
Madam Moderator, do you want to speak to that?
Mr. Guti? Mr. Knowles? Somebody?
The answer is yes.
Yes, this parcel, the protective zones are on the parcel. Part of this procedure is to verify and delineate exactly where the zones are. This has been- This has been a figure given from our engineer that is the minimum it will cost to verify that it is a potential, potentially viable field. Initial tests had indicated that it could be a very productive area, but this is the minimum test, would pay for the minimum testing, additional drilling, pumping, and all the environmental permits, which include delineating and marking wetlands, wellhead protection areas, to achieve the permit for well, for water withdrawal as required by DEP. If the testing results that it is not viable, then it won't go forward. There'll be no request for acquisition of property. But if this provides, proves out to be a viable source, then the department will come back to the town looking for authorization to acquire property.
Anna Sullivan, Ash Street. My concern is that, if I'm understanding this correctly, there is no contractual obligation for the person who owns this land to sell the land to the town, and it, there will be some point in the future where if this land is determined to be viable as a water source, that person will have that information and the negotiating ability of the town will be compromised. I would think, at the risk of being a Debbie Downer, that we should have some kind of contract in hand to purchase the land contingent on these tests, rather than do the tests, find out the results, and then hand that information to the seller.
Hi, my name is Mark Dickinson, and I have the authorization of the landowner to disclose the location if that's appropriate. I mean, I don't see what, why we're hiding all this. I mean-
Um, huh. Well, uh, is there some reason why you're standing up there? Oh.
May I propose that we cut this short? There may or may not be merit in this article. I suggest you do more homework and come back with a better proposal next year. Thank you.
All right, well, that was a suggestion, not a motion, so, yes, if you wish to disclose the location of property, it's in order.
Right, the land is located at 31 Dole Place. It's approximately about eight acres with about 800 feet of waterfrontage, and it's at the very end of Dole Place, where Dole Place makes a 90-degree and turns onto Rivercrest Drive. Most of the folks in town are aware of it anyway. The drilling has been going on out there for the past two, three months, and at, you know, at the authorization of the landowner, so, I'm just not sure why that wouldn't, I mean, I, they have a legitimate right to know. It's a $200,000 proposal. I would want to know if I wasn't associated with it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, hold on just a second, there's-
Yeah, I would just like to say, I think the young lady who made a statement, a couple people before me, made a very good point. Without a contract in hand, we're investing $200,000 into a piece of property that someone could parlay into a bigger profit from the town later, and I would suggest that we do not appropriate the funds unless a contract is in hand, and maybe postpone it to a future time. Thank you.
So, along those lines, I was just wondering if there, if there's been a price for the property that's been negotiated, even if there's not a contract, just so we can get an idea of what an additional cost would be if this pans out?
Apparently, there's no cost available at this time. Any further discussion? Mr. Guti?
Can you offer?
No.
I just want to say that, first of all, this piece of property just became available, and it's not something that we could really wait on right now. In the past, the young lady was talking about out at Indian Hill, and the same issue happened out there, and we did not negotiate the final price until after all the wells were in place, and we did not pay any more value for, per se, something like mineral rights or anything like that. I would think that this would be the same type of situation. I really don't know, but I think that the land is what it is. It's a build, it's whatever amount of building lots, or whatever you might have out there, whatever that value is, I can see that. Right now, we've been looking for this piece of land and waiting for it to come available. I've been talking with that family for many years, and it's now become available now, so it's just popped up, and that's why we're rushing to get this done, because the Water Department actually had to take one of our articles off of this warrant, and we had about $140,000 in the Selectmen offered to help us out to try to do this. Can't guarantee what it's going to cost, but I can tell you that it's five times better, maybe even 10 times better than any well site that we found in town. USGS, this is the only site in West Newbury that is a viable site. It can probably produce four times the size of this town population if this site could pan out to be what it could be. I'm just saying, the timing is everything, and it's not good right now, but we really need to jump on this to see if it's viable or not, and I hope to get your support. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Mr. James.
Madam Moderator, I've worked for the Town of West Newbury and the Water Department for 16 years. We have drilled holes all over this town, from Indian Hill Street, Middle Street, Bachelor Street, all over. We've only come up with two that were worth anything at all. This one far exceeds anything we have ever looked for in the Town of West Newbury or in the Merrimack Valley. If this, if you turn down this vote tonight, not to do this, that site is lost forever. Just think of that.
Well, just a minute, there's somebody before you. That's all.
I was wondering if we have any sort of ROI projections based on, you know, if everything works out, how long would it take to recoup our investment based on the cheaper water and the price differential?
Does anyone have this? Mr. Archibald.
I can't vouch for my numbers. I did it one evening. The amount of, and the, I think, Mr. Guti would, would vouch for this, what we're spending to buy water from Newburyport, if we ultimately, in terms of acquiring the property, developing the pumping capacity for the, for the property and so forth, the water treatment, ultimately, if we had to borrow that amount of money, the annual payments on that would approximate what we spend annually to buy water from Newburyport. So, I think it's, even, even if you, if you calculate it on that, I mean, obviously, it's a very rough estimate, but it, but it is in that neighborhood.
I just don't want it to get lost that we haven't done our homework, because, because that's not the case. I mean, no, have we, have we negotiated the price of the land yet? No. But if we did everything, everything else, down to that, the Board of Selectmen, we had, at one of our meetings, that what we're paying for water now from Newburyport, not what we're paying, which is going up every single year. So, the amount of money that we're paying Newburyport now will take care of the bond for the infrastructure and the purchase of the land for, you know, a, a bond payment. And since I've been a Selectman, everybody's saying, we need to be more self-sufficient in our, you know, water. We cannot keep on buying water from Newburyport. We've been saying it for so many years, and without getting into all the minutia, there is going to be new regulations where you have to start replenishing wetlands that you're coming out of. It's not going to be advantageous for Newburyport now to be selling, excuse me, in the future to be selling water to West Newbury, because the amount of gallons that you're pumping out, you have to start replenishing them somewhere. You have to have some type of replenishing system of wetlands or something to bring back and replenish your own, own water system. I'm telling you right now, we have done our homework. As Mark Dickinson said, it really isn't a secret, because we've been out there with test wells. This is the next step. There is, there is a few ifs and so forth and so on, yes, there is, because this is the next step. We would have never brought this before you tonight if we didn't think this was the most viable site that we've seen probably in everybody's history in this town, because we've been down this road before, and they just won't pump the gallons. It's all about how many gallons we'll pump. We won't, I think it's only like quarter capacity that we would have to get. The amount of water that that will produce, we would only have to pump it at quarter capacity around to be able to fulfill all of West Newbury's needs.
I'm Ann Bardine from Indian Hill Street, and we have our own well. I'm not on the water system, but I really love being water independent myself, and I want to remind the town that usually when we talk about water, people wring their hands about the fact that town meeting, what, 50 or 60 years ago, sold its rights to water to Newburyport. Now, we pay through the nose, or you all do, for water. It sounds to me like the town has done its homework and found a way to return this water independence that we gave away once before, so I would urge everyone to support this.
Mr. Parker.
My name's Rick Parker, and I also am on a well, so, you know, I have nothing to gain from this if we do buy it. However, if you look at the rest of the world, or the rest of this country, you realize that much of the world is under extreme water pressure. There's not enough of it. There's not enough good potable water. Look at California now. Look at the entire American Southwest. You know, look at most of Africa. Now, obviously, we're the Northeast, and we think that we're water-rich, but I don't think we should be too cocky about that. You know, climate's changing. A lot of things are going to change. We might get more water, we might get less water, as precipitation. So, if we have an opportunity to grab a resource, and we're really confident that it's a solid resource, it's stupid not to.
Anybody have anything new they want to offer on this? I think we've had the discussion. Okay, are you ready to vote? Okay. So, the motion is to appropriate $205,000, a mixture coming from the Water Department Free Cash and the town Free Cash. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The ayes have it. Article five, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the sum of $171,448.57 to fund the snow and ice deficit. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee voted unanimously to approve this article. Snow removal is an annual expense that is difficult to budget precisely. It is the only line item that the Department of Revenue permits towns to deficit spend, and I apologize for reminding you, but we had a tremendous amount of snow this year, and the town spent $321,448.57 against a budget of $150,000. So, the, the transfer from Free Cash is needed to cover this year's expenditure in excess of that budgeted amount, which is $171,448.57.
Mr. Anderson.
I move to transfer from Free Cash the sum of $171,448.57 to fund the snow and ice deficits.
Mr. Bill.
Yes, we've submitted a whole bunch of bills to FEMA for reimbursement, and it looks like we're probably going to get about $50,000 from FEMA towards this.
Mr. Kemper.
Offset the one, you made that statement, because that will offset the $171,448.57. Yeah, I understand, but I'm saying that will offset that, so any money that, if we, even if we appropriate that, that money will then zero out to Free Cash. That was the head of our emergency management.
And we did hear you. Any, any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. It's unanimous. Article six, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the sum of $90,800 to purchase a new dispatch console. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article by a vote of four in favor with one abstention. This article calls for the replacement of the antiquated dispatch console presently in use in the town's public safety complex. Both the Chief of Police, Holmes, and Fire Chief Dwyer presented compelling reasons for replacement of the console, which obviously is a critical piece of equipment for the town's emergency services. There have been episodes of failure, and repair parts are increasingly difficult to obtain, and the new console will be computer-based and use readily available parts. Use of the regional dispatch center in Amesbury was considered, but that system has experienced its own infrastructure problems, nor does it have the local knowledge of this town and its street names. Moreover, there would be instances in which there would be no one present at the station if the town does not maintain its own dispatch center, and purchase of this new system will allow that to continue. The $90,800 would be appropriated from Free Cash, but the quote was actually less than that, and there is hope that the initial quote for about $85,000, $83,000 will be, will be, best efforts will be used to hold on to that same quote.
Mr. Archibald.
I move to transfer from Free Cash the sum of $90,800 to purchase a new dispatch console.
Second. Is there any discussion?
What is the expected life of the console and the annual proposed maintenance costs?
Anyone have that information? So, 20 years?
Around 20 years, there's no, no-
There's no increased maintenance costs at all to it, just no, other than- You want to speak to it, please?
Hi, this is Mike Dwyer. This current equipment is going to replace what we're using in the current setup at the Public Safety Building. Any replacement or repairs that's made to it is going to be off-the-shelf parts. We're looking at at least a 10-year, 15-year life expectancy on that. It's all computer-based equipment, off-the-shelf workstations, and controller interfaces that would tie into our radio communications.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The ayes have it. Article seven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $15,750 to provide replacement of self-contained breathing apparatus, air tanks, and related breathing equipment, or take any action related thereto. This appropriation is contingent upon acknowledgment that the related federal grant applied for through FEMA under the Assistance to Firefighters Program, which comprises 95 percent of the total cost of the breathing apparatus and other breathing equipment, has been secured by the Town of West Newbury by contract with the federal government. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee voted unanimously approve this article. Previous town meetings had appropriated this amount to purchase this acc- Previous town meetings had appropriated this amount to purchase this equipment, assuming a 95% federal match would be forthcoming. Until now, the federal grants were disapproved, citing that some useful life remained in the existing equipment. Now the equipment is at the end of its useful life, and approval of the federal grant is much more likely. The equipment is essential for continued fire department certification and would be funded from free cash.
Mr. Kemp.
I move to transfer from free cash to sum of $15,750 to provide replacement or self-contained breathing apparatus, air tanks, and related breathing equipment.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The ayes have it. Article eight, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $60,000 for the purchase of a van for the use by the West Newbury Senior Center, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to dispose of the old vehicle in the best interest of the town. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee unanimously approves this article, recommends the town do the same. The van used by the Council on Aging for the Transport of Senior Citizens has recently been taken off the road due to safety concerns related to its condition and its failure to pass state inspection. This is a widely-used service. Last year, provided 500 rides to 70 seniors. Currently, this service is being provided by the driver in his personally-owned vehicle. This article seeks appropriation of $60,000 to purchase and equip a new van. That dollar figure is reflective of a Department of Transportation estimate, and the purchase will be made from free cash. It's important to note that going forward, this vehicle will be cared for and housed at the fire department. So, part of the issue with the previous one, related to undercarriage damage due to, you know, salt and sand from the road. The vehicle will be of a different style and will be more easily maintained.
Ms. Schrader.
I move to transfer from free cash to sum of $60,000 for the purchase of a van for the use by the West Newbury Senior Center and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to dispose of the old vehicle in the best interest of the town.
Any discussion? Not all those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. It's unanimous. Article nine, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $33,662 to purchase a 2015 Ford Interceptor utility vehicle for the police department, and to authorize the Chief of Police and the Board of Selectmen to dispose of the old vehicle in the best interest of the town. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. The police department has requested this amount to replace a 2007 Ford F-150 pickup truck that's in less than desirable condition. The department has a need for this type of vehicle to handle equipment, to operate and inclement weather, and to operate in off-road conditions. The vehicle, the F-150 that this is replacing, has over 150,000 miles and needs to be repaired frequently. This would be purchased from free cash.
Mr. Anderson.
I move to transfer from free cash to sum of $33,662 to purchase a 2015 Ford Interception utility vehicle for the police department and to authorize the Chief of Police and the Board of Selectmen to dispose of the old vehicle in the best interest of the town.
Is there any discussion? Not all those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The ayes have it. Just to sort of speed things along, I'd like to explain that the next five articles, one, two, three, four, five articles, are actually housekeeping items. The money that we appropriated for these particular items last year was more than was needed. The leftover money will revert to free cash at some point, but this will expedite things so that that money becomes available to be used for other items. So, this is money that you previously appropriated in the fiscal year 2014. Yes, and we're now just attempting to put it back into free cash. Okay? So, Article 10, to see if the town will vote to rescind the residual available appropriation of $25,288.20, where the original appropriation of $26,548 was made at the annual town meeting of April 29, 2013, within Article 9, which was funded from free cash for anticipated veterans' benefit needs in that particular year. Said project has been completed, and there are no further commitments to this source. The balance is to be returned to the general fund equity balance for inclusion in this year's free cash determination. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article. This article serves to place $25,288.20 into the free cash account. This money was appropriated by the town in 2013 to address anticipated veterans' benefit needs. This purpose has been completed, but the money will remain encumbered unless it is converted into the free cash account by action of the town.
I move to rescind the residual available appropriation of $25,288.20, where the original appropriation of $26,548 was made at the annual town meeting of April 29, 2013, within Article 9. The balance to be returned to the general fund equity balance for inclusion in this year's free cash determination.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. It's unanimous. Article 11, to see if the town will vote to rescind the residual available appropriation of $52,186, where the original appropriation of $260,930 was made at the special town meeting of April 28, 2014, within Article 21, which was funded from free cash for the town's share of costs for repairs to the Penticott Middle School. Said project has been completed, and there are no further commitments to this source. The balance is to be returned to the general fund equity balance for inclusion in this year's free cash determination. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article. This article serves to place $52,186 into the free cash account. This money was appropriated in 2014 for repairs to the Penticott Middle School. This purpose has been completed, but the money will remain encumbered unless it is converted into free cash, into the free cash account by action of the town.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Kemp.
I move to rescind the residual available appropriation of $52,186, where the original appropriation of $260,930 was made at the special town meeting of April 28, 2014, within Article 21. The balance to be returned to the general fund equity balance of inclusion is this year's free cash determination.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. It's unanimous. Article 12, to see if the town will vote to rescind the residual available appropriation of $35,268.71, where the original appropriation of $50,000 was made at the special town meeting of November 4, 2013, within Article 15, which was funded from free cash for the town's share of utility costs for the John C. Page School. Said project has been completed, and there are no further commitments to this source. The balance is to be returned to the general fund equity balance for inclusion in this year's free cash determination. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article. This article serves to place $35,268.71 into the free cash account. This money was appropriated by the town in 2013 to address utility costs at the Page School. This purpose has been completed, but the money will remain encumbered unless it is converted into the free cash account by action of the town.
Mr. Anderson.
I move to rescind the residual available appropriation of $35,268.71, where the original appropriation of $50,000 was made at the special town meeting of November 4, 2013, within Article 13. The balance to be returned to the general fund equity balance for inclusion in this year's free cash determination.
I'd like to offer a friendly amendment to your motion. It says it's within Article 15.
Oh, accepted. Wrong, Article 15.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. It's unanimous. Article 13, to see if the town will vote to rescind the residual available appropriation of $8,880, where the original appropriation of $35,000 was made at the special town meeting of November 8, 2012, within Article 6, which was funded from free cash for repairs to the lobby of the John C. Page School. Said project has been completed, and there are no further commitments to this source. The balance is to be returned to the general fund equity balance for inclusion in this year's free cash determination. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article. This article serves to place $8,880 into the free cash account. This money was appropriated by the town in 2012 to address repairs to the Page School lobby. This purpose has been completed, but the money will remain encumbered unless it is converted into the free cash account by action of the town.
Mr. Archibald.
I move to rescind the residual available appropriation of $8,880, where the original appropriation of $35,000 was made at the special town meeting of November 8, 2012, within Article 6. The balance to be returned to the general fund equity balance for inclusion in this year's free cash determination.
What is the recommendation? I'm sorry. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. It's unanimous. Article 14, to see if the town will vote to rescind the residual available appropriation of $16,384.77, where the original appropriation of $105,690 was made at the special town meeting of April 29, 2013, within Article 13, which was funded from free cash for repairs to the cafeteria floor at the John C. Page School. Said project has been completed, and there are no further commitments to this source. The balance is to be returned to the general fund equity balance for inclusion in this year's free cash determination. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, once again, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article. This article serves to place $16,384.77 into the free cash account. This money was appropriated by the town in 2013 to address repairs to the cafeteria floor at the Page School. This purpose has been completed, but the money will remain encumbered unless it is converted into free cash by action of the town.
Mr. Anderson.
I move to rescind the residual available appropriation of $16,384.77, where the original appropriation of $105,690 was made at the special town meeting of April 29, 2013, within Article 13. The balance to be returned to the general fund equity balance for inclusion in this year's free cash determination.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. It's unanimous. Article 15, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $10,039.86 to pay for the town's share of costs owed to the Essex North Shore Technical School, or to take any other action related thereto. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. One West Newbury student is attending Essex North Shore Technical School. In the past, the Commonwealth dispersed tuition money directly to the school. However, last year it was sent to the town, but absent an appropriation, the town could not pay the school the tuition due. The $10,039.86 represents the remaining 50% of the tuition. The first 50% was paid via reserve fund transfer approved by the Finance Committee earlier this year. The remaining tuition will be paid from free cash.
Mr. Archibald.
I move to transfer from free cash the sum of $10,039.86 to pay for the town's share of costs owed to the Essex North Shore Technical School.
Any discussion? Not all those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. It's unanimous. Article 16, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept by gift, donation, or otherwise, the land with buildings thereon commonly referred to as the Charles L. Carr Post, and as further described in the deed from Marion H.W. Nason and Parker H. Nason dated November 22, 1923, and recorded with Essex South District of Deeds in Book 2584, page 32, and to take any other action in furtherance thereof. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends the approval of this article. The Soldier and Sailor's Memorial Membership is unable to maintain the property any longer. They don't have the financial resources nor the membership resources. We like this article because it's an unconditional transfer of the property to the town, giving the town the option of either, in the next article, voting on disposition of it, or allowing it to be raised. So, either way, the town would control it. If we don't take advantage of this and vote no on it, then we risk having the property have to go through illegal proceedings, which we don't really want to do. So, we strongly recommend that the town vote affirmative on this.
Mr. Kemp.
I move to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept by gift, donation, or otherwise, the land with buildings thereon commonly referred to as the Charles L. Carr Post, and as further described in the deed from Marion H.W. Nason and Parker H. Nason dated November 22, 1923, and recorded with the Essex South District Registry of Deeds in Book 2584, page 32.
Discussion.
I would motion that we postpone decision or voting on Article 16 until Article 17 has been decided upon, where we decide where we would like to talk about the will of the town in regards to the work that needs to be performed at the American Legion Carr Post, 363 Main Street. I believe that we're getting into kind of a catch-22 here by accepting the property without having a further discussion on what we'd like to do with the property.
Yes, I'm considering whether the motion is in order, and the reason I'm considering whether the motion is in order, it's not clear to me, is that it's not clear to me that we can vote to transfer Community Preservation Act funds to a piece of property that we don't own.
Yes, you can.
You can?
I can't do that.
Okay, as long as you can do that, I'm fine. No, I was, no, we have discussion. Mr. Knowles.
Madam Moderator, would you consider discussion under both eyes, since they both relate to the same matter, at the same... Discussion, not voting. That way the vote compares to both eyes.
I can't hear you.
Okay.
Point of order is a motion on the floor.
Yes, there is a motion on the floor. However, there are motions which supersede other motions, and that's my job. The discussion would be under the motion to change the order of the articles. The discussion was, would it make more sense to just discuss both articles in tandem instead of changing the order? That motion is in order as well. It's an amendment to the amendment, which makes things somewhat complicated, and so it's probably better not to make an amendment to an amendment for that particular reason. So, I'm going to rule Mr. Knowles' motion out of order because it's an amendment to amendment. However, it can still be done. All that needs to be done, just wait, please. All that needs to be done is to vote down this particular amendment, if you'd rather discuss them in tandem, and then bring that motion back to discuss the two motions in tandem, the two articles in tandem, which is in order. So, you have an option here. Okay? Or, actually, you have three options. You can leave things the way they are. You can vote to change the order of Articles 16 and 17, so that we discuss the funding before we discuss the acceptance, and apparently, this is fine. Or, you can vote down the motion that's on the floor, which is to amend, in anticipation of another motion to amend, which would say that we conflate the two articles in one discussion. Does everybody understand what I'm saying?
Okay.
Okay, so, a no motion, a no motion on this would make it possible for Mr. Knowles to reintroduce his motion, okay? Or, it would make it possible to just do exactly what's written here, okay? A yes motion on this would mean that we take up Article 17 first, before we take up Article 16. Okay, so, your choice is reverse the order or discuss them together.
What exactly is the motion? What was the wording?
Okay, the motion was to take up Articles 16 and 17 in reverse order.
Okay.
That was the motion to amend.
The motion was to postpone.
Okay? Any other questions about how we're voting on this now? Is everybody more or less clear on it? Okay. So... So right now, we're voting on the motion to amend, which is actually a motion to reverse the order of the articles. All those in favor of reversing the order of the articles, raise your cards. All those opposed, raise your cards. Okay, well, we're gonna have to count it. Could I have the tellers, please? Please raise your cards high and keep them raised until the tellers have completed the count. Please do this side and the selectmen. You do this side, the finance committee. All those in favor of the motion to reverse the order of the articles, please raise your cards. Motion fails 53 to 45. Okay. Now, the main motion is back on the floor, which is just to accept the property. Do you wish to make your motion again, Mr. Knowles?
No, he has to get the mic.
Move to conduct discussion on Articles 16 and 17 in tandem?
Is there a second? Is there any discussion of this? All those in, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards, and that motion passes. So we, okay. So, yes, we have to have two motions on the, two main motions on the floor at the same time. Can't do that. Okay. Okay, so, yeah, so I'll just accept discussion on either article, but in the end, we'll have to have a motion for Article 17. The motion on the floor now is for Article 16, to accept. I'll allow discussion on both accepting and funding, but then after that is finished, we have to vote, we have to have a new motion for Article 17. So the discussion is open under Articles 16 and 17. Ms. Kemper?
The members of the Carr Post Legion came to the Selectmen last year, and because of their increased age and their inability to be able to maintain the building, they thought the best thing to do with it, so it would not fall in any more disrepair or go to a developer or get knocked down, would be to give it to the town as a gift. During this discussion, I can tell you what it has been for the town. The building was originally called the Boy Carr and was used, the first floor, as the Town Library, which was started by the Ladies Library Association. In 1990, the building served as the Post Headquarters for Major Board Carr, 151. And in the '20s, the lower half was named the Soldier and Sailor's Memorial Building. In 1923, after World War I, the deed and the land and the building were renamed Charles R. Carr Post, 240 American Legion. I think if you've lived in this town for any significant of time, you know that tons of different groups, organizations, the Boy Scouts, they had dances there weekly in the '50s, '60s, and '70s on the second floor. It's been an integral part of this town's history, and as one Selectman, I'd like to see it preserved. That's what we're here for, asking tonight. And I'm gonna discuss both things. I don't think, I mean, I think we should take it as a gift, no matter if 17 passes or not. I think 17 should pass because that discussion is going to be about, and we have everybody here tonight to answer some questions about that, is to stabilize the building so the building doesn't go into any more disrepair, because that's what's happening to it. This has been under the works, have been talked about, I don't know, for 10 years. We knew it was all coming. I think, one way or another, this town has to make a decision about this building because if we don't accept it as a gift, because of the age of the members, we're gonna end up with it anyway, eventually. And I think sooner is better than later because it does need to be stabilized so no other harm comes to the building. That's just maybe a brief opening. We had a, to go back on the discussion of 17, if you'd like, we've had a conditions assessment done of it. There's pictures around here. The architect that did that conditions assessment is Patrick, and he is here to answer any questions that you may have. The Historical Commission is also here. We have looked for grants. It's going to be fast-tracked to the National Registry because the Massachusetts Historical Commission feels it's an integral part of the state, and they are actually paying for all the application fees, all the grant writing and everything that, and so forth that goes on with that process, then that will start a bunch of money that we can get for it. Article 17 is about stabilizing the building. I see as a Selectman, after that happens and after we receive it as a gift, that we set up a committee. A committee that will represent different aspects of the town and then try to restore it, not tomorrow, not, you know, the next day, but restore it through grants, through CPA money. It could be a 10-, 15-year process, but we know it at least is stabilized, and then we can bring it back to its previous luster. That is the plan. So if anybody's, you know, wondering, well, how much money is it going to cost? We do have some estimates, but it's going to be a process through grants, national grants, state grants, and CPA money. So I think that's a good way of maybe starting it, to generate some questions.
Further discussion? Mr. James?
Madam Moderator, I'd like to thank the finance committee. They did a well-rounded representation of the Carr Post. It's not an easy issue. There are pros and cons, you know, both sides. I, for one, and the Historic Commission, would really hate to see the building, number one, deteriorate any further than it is and actually wind up being torn down. I think it's, like Glenn said, I think it's a very integral part of the town. It has been for over 100 years. I've been picking a few brains over the weekend, and there are, there's a school in around Boston, I can't think of the name of it, I've forgotten it now, that teaches historic preservation and renovation. Okay, that was the one, Bennett Street School. They may very well be interested in taking that on as a project. The Massachusetts Historic Commission has matching grants. Once we're on the state and national historic register, we can apply for matching grants. There may very well be more grants out there that we can tap into. I know Essex, the Essex Heritage Foundation is giving out money. They've already done 15 articles of different towns this year. We need to do a little, you know, more research. So I think the funds are available. It's gonna take a little digging to figure out what we can get, where we can get it, how we can get it, but I think it's worthwhile doing. You know, there's been some discussion of what we're gonna do with the building. I don't feel that it's up to the Historic Commission or the Board of Selectmen to tell you folks what we're gonna do with the building. If you take possession of it, I think, as Glenn said, set up a committee. You folks decide what you're gonna do with the building. What is it gonna be used for? There's been some discussion, just in meetings, of a possibility of maybe a single individual having an office in it with, you know, very little traffic. Possibility of an art studio or an art gallery, possibly. I personally would like to see the Legion Hall or the Legion members be able to use that building as long as their charter is in force for nothing. I'd also like to see any legal veterans organization be able to use that building for a minimal fee. The Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts are in need of a place to kind of call home. That might very well be a spot for it. I'd also kind of like to see possibility of a military museum. And I don't mean half-tracks and AK-47s, I'm just, I'm thinking memorabilia, that kind of stuff. Also, the library has a lot of historic information that they cannot display properly because they don't have the room. If, that could be another use for that building once it's done. So I mean, there's just some things out there to think about, and I'm sure there's probably more. But I think we need to, number one, save the building and then figure out what we're gonna do with it from there. But, you know, first of all, the $99,000 would go a long way to it. It buys us time, and then we could look into additional avenues of funding fundraisers? Who knows? But, I mean, the options are there. So I just assume, just let everybody, I'd like to see you at least vote to save the building. Thank you.
Are you simultaneously, so?
The proposal to continue to use, or various groups to use the building, actually speaks to an issue I question. What's the long-term strategic plan? This seems to be a one-off save for a valued historical building, but there should be a larger plan of what's the other issues that we can solve it. Where does this fit?
I believe that Mr. Kemper stated that the money that you're being asked to appropriate tonight is to stabilize the building, and then he went on further to say that uses, he recommended that there, a committee be formed to determine uses and further restoration of the building. So you're asking for a long-term plan when what you're being asked to appropriate money for is a short-term stabilization. I recognize the lady in the back. I will recognize you.
Madam Moderator, I'm Beth Koopman. My question is, is the American Legion gonna be permitted to continue to use the hall after the purchase of the building? And I've had the idea in my mind, I don't know if it's true or not, that there's a liquor license at that building, and what happens to that? No?
This is not a purchase, this is a gift. So, okay. Do you want to answer about whether the American Legion can use it?
That was one of their main concerns, actually, when I talked to Mr. Hills. He was wondering and nervous that if they could have their meeting Memorial Day there. And I assured them that if we did take it as a gift, that they would be able to use that until, for services like that in Lead, but they don't use it anymore. I mean, they really don't have an active membership any longer. And the answer to the liquor license, there was, there is no liquor license anymore for there. If you've been to an event there on Thanksgiving morning, the all-sports breakfast, that is a one-day liquor license that's obtained by that, by a nonprofit organization from the Board of Selectmen, that that's the only, if that was confusing you, because there is liquor served there.
I'm Horst Ombusch, and I live on 747 Main Street here. I recognize that utility is not the only guiding principle of communal action, however comparative value, I believe, is. And if you look at the school budget in total, it's about $7 to $8 million. And if it takes about $1 million for an initial preservation of a single building, I would say that comparative value and use to the community ought to be significant here. And I do not see the relative value of maybe 15% of an education budget flowing into a single building that's about 100 years old. My house is 110 years old, so I think we should consider comparative value when we look at what we pay in terms of property taxes. Thank you.
Well, I, I had already recognized. I will recognize you. No, wait your turn. Got three of you running up here.
Good evening. My name is Dennis Hunger from 12 Maple Street in West Newbury. My home is over 200 years old. Old buildings are fun. And I've worked on hundreds of them. I'm a structural engineer. I've worked on projects like the Tenny Gate House, a great success story. I've worked on massive, massive preservations all over New England. And we don't start stabilizing buildings until we know what we're gonna do with them. Okay? The Tenny Gate House was in deterioration, horrible deterioration, and it continued to deteriorate until we decided to make it into a museum. And the deterioration didn't matter because almost none of the structural aspects were usable in the end. We practically rebuilt the building from the inside out. The gentleman who said a million dollars, forget it. It's a big project, okay? But I am in favor of accepting title, but I am not in favor of trying to preserve what we don't know has any value at all. You know, Nepal, those buildings like that fall down. They're not safe. They're not built to modern standards. We're practically rebuilding a building inside a building when we try to restore a building like that. It's worth it in the end, but if you don't have a vision of what you're gonna do with it, it's a bad investment to continue to try to keep preserving something that you don't know what you're preserving. There'll be plenty left in the end if you decide that you have a specific use for this building. You're not gonna lose anything of value by letting the building deteriorate. But if you ultimately decide, well, we just can't keep stopping this from falling in, then everything you put into it is just gonna go down when you demolish the building. So I am opposed to spending money on a building until we know what we're gonna do with it. Thank you.
Mr. Kemper, did you clear up that?
Well, I'd like to speak to the gentleman who mentioned about the school funds and stuff like that. There is no proposal, which I could not support, that we would divert money from educating our children or from our line item budget to be able to support this building. So I just want to make sure if that was.
Excuse me, but that is out of order. Mr. Kemper has the floor.
So I just wanted to make sure that was the case. If it changes anything, I'm almost, I'd like to have Patrick Guthrie speak on behalf of what will happen to that building if we don't preserve it also. That would be Article 17, because I think that's important, because I think it's a misnomer that it's not going to cost any more money or if we just leave it alone and decide. If you want to decide right now, tonight, what you want to do with the building, I'm willing to do that to be able to preserve it because it's, I mean, it's up to, obviously, the town. I think that was a very big thing about me. It's time to make the decision. This town needs to make the decision, because I don't think that decisions, we're not gonna have the decision in the future. So if you want to preserve a part of this town that's been around here for 100 years, an integral part of this town. We preserve pastures, we preserve scenic views. I think you're walking on thin ice because I don't think you, we understand that without it, it's going to be a bigger deal than trying to preserve it. So I would ask to preserve it. But I would think if Patrick, Madam Moderator, could answer some questions that if we don't stabilize this- stabilize this building, what will happen to it maybe in five, 10 years? Just to be able to.
Is there any objection to having Mr. Guthrie discuss this? Mr. Guthrie? Wrong one?
If you could give yourself just a little, a background of what, thank you.
My name is Patrick Guthrie. I'm an architect with the architecture firm of Spencer &amp; Vogt. And for the last 25 years with both the National Park Service, the Mass Historical Commission, and also in private practice, it's been my business to look at historic buildings and help owners make decisions about preserving those structures, often with lots of challenges for those buildings. We were asked to come and look at the car post specifically anticipating that there was the potential for a gift and to limit our examination to really say what, what are the tasks for stabilizing the building? And while a 100-year-old brick building is a very robust structure, you do need to do things like keep the water out of the walls. You will not be able to reconstruct the octagonal tower if it continues to bulge the way it is right now. And very simply, there's no roof on that tower that's being effective. So, part of what we had recommended and part of what is in the Article 17 is stabilization for the building. And I will suggest that in this case, letting the building continue to weather the way it is will not create a static situation, but could lead to the loss of the, of the tower itself, which right now has a lot of water coming into it. And the way that brick is laid up on the outside is, it's a course of brick on the outside, and then there's a hollow void behind that, and then there's plaster and other finishes on the interior. And right now, without the roofing on it, what's happening is water's getting in behind that wall, and that's pushing the wall apart. So, you, if you do not take action, that will continue, and it will continue to accelerate the deterioration of the building, which is why we were asked to prepare a recommendation for five years of stabilization. So, are there specific questions about, about the building and about what the intent is on that Article 17?
Let me remind you that if, if you intend to ask questions, as much as possible, please direct them through the moderator and avoid getting into some sort of a cross-examination situation.
Yes, please.
Madam Moderator, is it, how long would it take to perform the stabilization work just to secure the building, basically the $99,900 plus or minus stabilization work that's mentioned in the, the article?
The timeframe for the construction, I don't know specifically what that would be, but it, very briefly, the outline of it is to disassemble some of that, the top of that tower, make sure that we have a roof over the entirety of the tower, do some stabilization within the tower going down to the basement, add a little bit of shoring in the flooring down below. So, maybe a 60 or 90-day job.
So, Madam Moderator, Tony Wright on Crane Next Street. It's sort of a catch-22 here. We're being asked to take one step like dipping our feet into the Iraq War or something, you know, without, without an end goal really in sight at this point. And we have faith that people will come forward and do some, do something else and pull this building together. I mean, the, the initial remediation will actually make the building perhaps even less useful. I mean, all, all we're doing is keeping it from falling down, basically. And I think I read the details. It looks like it's, you're going to close off one entrance to a tower and put some wires across the upper floor. That might make actually the building a little bit less useful, but at least it'll keep it from falling down. So, so really, there's no benefit to the community as a whole for doing this unless people come forward into the future and create something out of it like a, I don't know, a town tourist information office, gallery, library, or something. But are there any numbers floating around? That million dollars sounded pretty accurate to me. I mean, there's a huge number of things wrong with that building, and to really make it a useful building, it's really hard to take this step and just go as far as, I guess really what we're only voting on tonight is giving it a, allowing it not to be, if we vote against these articles, we're basically giving the building a death sentence, and it'll be knocked down shortly. But, but on the other hand, if we vote to keep the building and we're not, we're just treading water, and it'd be nice to know maybe what it would cost, what the end, the end target is here and whether we're talking about $1 million or $2 million or, and what's the likelihood of really getting some grant money to, to do that? And so, right now, we get kind of a tough decision, so.
I would agree. It's a tough decision because it is an investment without the final use determined. The brief answer is without the initial investment. I think the timeframe under which you have to make any additional decisions about use becomes much shorter.
Okay, hold on a minute.
I just want to speak to this.
Madam Moderator, Peter Lawrence-Leece. I'm at Brick Hill Terrace. I just need a clarification. So, Article 16, if we were to vote, it would be accepting a gift. Article 17 is a specific use for that gift? That would be like a?
No. Article 17 is to appropriate funds to stabilize, which is what Mr. Guthrie's talking about. Not to renovate, not to make something new out of it, just stabilize the existing structure so that at some future time, it can be used.
So, accepting the gift, we, if, if we were to accept a gift, an Article 16, but not Article 17, could we do whatever we want with it? If it wasn't safe, could we raise it and turn it into something else? And we could maybe meet at town meeting?
I believe that's what Mr. Kemper said.
So.
It just belongs to the town. We can do whatever we want.
So, the way I was raised is when someone offers you a gift, you accept it. And then you may not know what to do with it, you know, maybe a pair of socks or a tie, you don't, you know, use it, but you just accept it, and then you move on. Thank you.
That's true. My uncle said that to me.
Okay. Now, I'm trying to get people in the order in which I saw your hands, but now I've got all different people. You're making it very difficult for me. Yes, and then I'll go, go around.
Madam Moderator, Brian Murphy, Hilltop Circle. It's, it's a great point that Peter just made. However, I think there's certainly liability on the town should we just accept it as a gift and still have people using it. And especially if we don't vote on some improvement program, has that been considered?
Okay, now, there was a question, there was a question in that which I will attempt to get an answer for. Mr. Kemper.
No. We would still have to restrict the use of not going on the second floor. To speak to this gentleman's point also, that restoring the, restoring the building would not limit any of the use now. You can't use the second floor. So, when you mentioned about having the bars across, you cannot, you can go up there. I mean, but there is, you cannot use. It's not safe to go up there. So, it would just be only the continued use on the first floor. So, any of this restoration would not limit the use, what you had mentioned, sir. The, the doors that he mentioned that would have to be closed off are in the tower portion, which is generally maybe like 15 by 15, and it, it's like, it's a room. So, it can't be used now. The ceilings are falling down. There's, I mean, you can't use it now. It's not pretty. That's why it needs to be stabilized.
Okay, now, believe me, I've seen your hands before. There is a sort of fluidity about this. However, there is a gentleman in the back who's been trying to be recognized for some time while the rest of you, and you don't see what I see. So, I'm going to recognize the gentleman in the back.
Maybe not.
Oh, it's a lady in the back. I'm sorry. It was a hand.
My name is Sandy Birkenbush. I was part of a small group of people that worked a number of years ago to raise money to stabilize some of the things that went on with the Legion. It has a new furnace. It has a new oil tank. There's some, a number of things that have been going on. There's approximately $4,100 still left in the account, so we're, we're well on our way. It's interesting because I'm on the Board of Directors of the Custom House Maritime Museum as well. And 40 years ago this month, they were thinking about raising that building, and now it's a wonderful museum. So, once one of these beautiful treasures of our past goes away, they don't come back. And I think that accepting it as a gift, looking at the $99,000 that's in the CPA money, going after grants, forming a committee, we're not going to get this building back if we let it deteriorate anymore. Thank you.
Mrs. Leonard?
Is there a microphone again?
No, it's not. That's all right. We'll wait.
We'll wait for anything you have to say. Watch out. Watch out. He looks like a dude. She's going the other way, though. Watch out. You're getting this on tape, right?
God love Peter. Thank you, darling. I just, I, I really tuned in to what that last lady said because that's what I'm getting. I'm not hearing anything about the, the historic value of this building. I'm not, I'm hearing, not hearing anything about the, the men who went out to the Civil War to help keep the country together, that were, that fought and died, and they're being honored in that building. To say, to say nothing of us, I understand that there were, there were veterans from the other wars, and we're just, you know, it's, throw it away. No, no, don't throw it away. It, it may take a little money. It may take a little time, and I think somebody said we can look for grants elsewhere, but I think this is a very important part of the town. We don't have anything like that honoring our veterans. That's it all.
Cheers. Thank you. Ryan Goodwin, One Colby Lane, West Newbury. One of the things that I really, you know, I really feel, feel with pride in, in living in this town, and that's its way of life, its sense of history, and the thoughtfulness of its, of its citizens. And the, it's apparent that everybody wants to keep this building, but I'm not sure it's in the best interest of the town. And for that, for, for one reason, all, all of these arguments being predicated that we want to keep this, but is, is that the best interest for what's best for us, our limited tax means, our children? And it's, it's kind of interesting. I, I look at this building as a problem. This is, this, this building is not a gift. This building is, is a broken-down car that's been sitting on cinder blocks for 30 years in someone's backyard, and it's now being packaged together as a gift to you, but it's not. This is a building of bad decisions made over 50 years of disrepair, of somebody not spending adequate funds many years ago to, and now being given to you as, look at the historic value of this, of this building. But $1 million is, is probably a very conservative number for this building. That's just the initial thing. Once town funds are being spent on it, once, maybe grants come, maybe they don't, I, I, God, I, you know, I would, I would encourage them if it happens, but I'm skeptical on that, on whether that'll actually ever come to fruition. The, as, as, as a veteran who's carried a gun in a foreign war, we don't do it for plaques or memorials or buildings to put our names on and, and, and clap, pat each other on the back. We do it for the quality of life of America and for our children. And when I look at what I would like for my children, and I understand Chairman Kemper's view that he would never take, take money, excuse me, from the school budget for this, but, you know, the pot's only so big that we have so many dollars that go into the pot and X amount of dollars that have to come out, and this will be X, more X dollars that have to come out. And I would much rather use those funds for the betterment of our schools, the betterment of our public safety departments. There's a lot of needs in this town, and I'm not sure that this building is one of them. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to remind us that we still have an entire annual town meeting to take up this evening and that we are getting repetitious. If you have already spoken, please do not ask to be recognized again. I will not recognize you. If you have something new to offer, and if you're going to stand there and say it, it better be new, then you may be recognized. But please keep in mind that we have an entire annual town meeting to get through, and you have not been recognized yet, sir. So, please wait until you're recognized. This lady was actually in front of you. Yes?
I'm Elva Coald. I'm at 747 Main Street. We've only lived in West Newbury about 12 years, but I recognize the beauty of the building. I'm going to be brief, and I'm not going to repeat. But it seems to me, the gentleman who was talking about a place for Boy Scouts, a place for women's clubs, a place for seniors, what if the building just is going to cost $2 million to be restored? If we raised the building and recreated a historic replication of the building that was safe for clubs, that was safe for kids, that was safe for people to actually enjoy community life in there, not having to worry about keeping up the building, completing the maintenance, and safety? And just starting from scratch with an architect, a developer, a structural engineer, whoever it is, to create a real community center for this town? Because one thing about living in West Newbury is that there really is no center. So, why could we not build something that's beautiful, historic-minded, and that works for everyone in the community? You know, with all respect to the veterans, you know, who should be, who should be memorialized. So, that's my new idea.
Okay. Mrs. Selman?
I have a question to the architect. Is that?
That's definitely okay. Yes.
On the structure and how much needs to be done, is it not possible for it to cost less money and keep some of the historical building itself, even though I know framing or other things and roofing that has to be done, be cheaper than building a whole new building? Because I think she has a great idea about a community center that could encompass everyone in town, but we could also keep the historic structure, what is, on money-wise?
Well, that falls under the topic of it depends.
I'm sorry, can I add the second extension of that? Especially if it's historical and we are able to get historic funds, which we would not have with a new building.
Right. You are, you would be eligible for historic grants should the National Register eligibility paperwork be completed? The question of renovation versus new construction, it really does depend on what the final use is of the building and what goes in there, because there are different requirements via the building code when you're renovating a building based on its final use. So, there's not, there's not a direct answer to that.
Rather than bringing this to closure, unfortunately, we are proliferating, and it is 9:30. So, please make sure that this is something new, and please keep it as brief as possible. Have you already been recognized? I think you have.
I just have one question. After this stabilization, in your opinion, would that make this building safe to occupy?
The building is currently occupied.
Well, is it safe to occupy?
It's currently used. And I'm, I don't evaluate the safety of buildings. That's the local building official. Who does that? So, if the building is currently occupied, but the stabilization is about keeping the weather out of the building and about stabilizing the tower of the building.
And someone will have to decide if it's safe to occupy?
Right. That is the.
And that would be the architect.
No.
Excuse me, but this is cross-examination.
Sorry.
I think it's not about money. I really believe that we need to be a community that honors our veterans. I know this might sound dramatic, but I think it's what it is. We need to value history. We need to respect the architecture of this building. We need to do it now.
Mr. Cook?
Whether you're for or against it, you should be aware that the lot is very small. There is not much room for parking, and the septic system, there's, there's no good septic on the site. I'm personally in favor of preserving the building, but everybody needs to know that its future uses right now are quite limited because of the lot size and the septic problem.
I don't believe this building is usable immediately, even after this, because there is no acceptable septic in here. That's not in this plan to be fixed. The building is not ADA compliant, so you can't use it until you bring it up to ADA compliance. You've got structural issues, you've got parking issues. For a building that basically duplicates what we already have, this room's used maybe 30, 40 days a year, we've got the town hall down there that's used maybe three days a year, we have an abundance of, of building space that this building would duplicate. We're asking to be, to spend eventually a million dollars out of CPA funds. We've already tonight had a wellfield discussion. That's going to come out of that same money. We can spend the money on a wellfield, or we can spend it on this quote "money pit." Or we, and any money we want to spend on paid school for further enhancements can come out of that same CPA. We, as a town, have a choice. We can spend the money on schools and water, or we can put it into a building that's duplicative of what we already have. Thank you.
Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
I think so.
So quick point of clarification?
What's the point of clarification?
It says here that, already that probation is for $99,000, and it says the stabilization cost is going to be for $140,000 to $150,000. Where is the other $50,000 going to come from?
You must be looking at the Finance Committee report, because I don't see $150,000.
The first paragraph under the rationale, yes. That's the Finance Committee.
That's the Finance Committee report. That's not the article, and that's not the motion on the floor.
So, so based on the Finance Committee's report of $150,000 cost to do the initial stabilization, the $99,000 won't even be enough to do that?
That's right.
No. No, no.
Okay, we're voting on Article 17. Please keep this in mind. We discussed the two articles together.
That's not true.
The first article, Article 16, the motion is on the floor, I think, isn't it?
Yes.
Which is simply to accept the gift. After we vote on this, we will have to take a vote on Article 17 if Article 16 is approved. Okay? Okay, so you're voting on accepting the gift. Everyone clear on that? All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The ayes have it. Now, under Article 17, we'll need a motion.
Rick?
Oh, Mr. Bridges, okay.
I move to transfer from Community Preservation Act funds the sum of $99,905, with $41,083.79 coming from the CPA Historic Resources Reserve, and $58,821.21 coming from the CPA Unrestricted Fund balance for work to be performed at the American Legion Car Post 363 Main Street to perform critical work to stabilize the building and to prevent further deterioration.
Second.
We've already had the discussion. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. I have to count it. Would the tellers please come forward?
I think so.
Motion passes 63 to 36. I'll need a motion to adjourn the special town meeting.
So move.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Special town meeting is adjourned. Ladies and gentlemen, I beg your indulgence, please do not leave, or we will have to come back another night.
Please don't leave.
There it goes.
We're going to move quick.
All right. Open the annual town meeting.
Yeah, I am. I have to.
We are on Article 4. In accordance with provisions of Chapter 38 of the Acts of 1936, to see what instructions, rules, and regulations the town may wish to impose on the Board of Water Commissioners. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends unanimously that we approve this article. The article asks the town to approve the operating budget of the Water Department. Since the Water Department operates and is funded entirely, operates as a revolving fund, and is funded entirely by users' fees, its budget is not included in the town line item budget. The article shows the department budgeted line items total $633,835 for fiscal year ending 2016.
I believe you were making the recommendation on Article 5?
I was.
Okay. Article 4 is simply to see what instructions, rules, and regulations the town may provide? Does anyone, anyone have any instructions, rules, and regulations you wish to impose on the Board of Water Commissioners? Yet again, another year goes by and no one wishes to impose any, okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to Article 5. The, to see if the town will vote to appropriate in anticipation of Water Department revenue the sum of $633,835, of which $179,458 for salary and wages, which include $1,700 for Water Commissioner's stipends, $24,514 for insurances, $340,396 for expenses, $30,772 for debt service, $12,000 for extraordinary and unforeseen, and $46,695 for indirect costs. And since the Finance Committee has already given its recommendation, Mr. Knowles.
Move to appropriate in anticipation of Water Department revenue the sum of $587,140, of which $179,458 is for salaries and wages, which include $1,700 for Commissioner's stipends, $24,514 for insurances, $340,396 for expenses, $30,772 for debt service, $12,000 for extraordinary and unforeseen expenses.
Is there any discussion? Not all those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The ayes have it. Article 5, to see if, Article 6, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $36,000 from Water Enterprise Free, Water Enterprise Fund Free Cash Account to the Water Enterprise Stabilization Fund. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. The Water Department Stabilization Fund is established to pay for prioritized capital item replacement projects. This $36,000 request represents the connection fees from 12 homes at $3,000 each. These fees are historically designated for capital items. This is subject to state laws. Governing stabilization funds requires two-thirds vote to transfer any monies.
Mr. Knowles.
I move to transfer the sum of $36,000 from Water Enterprise Fund Free Cash Account to Water Stabilization, Enterprise Stabilization Fund.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Because this requires a two-thirds vote, I'm going to take it in reverse order. All those opposed to this motion, please raise your cards. All those in favor, please raise your cards. It's unanimous. Article 7, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $30,000 from the Water Enterprise Fund Stabilization Fund account to purchase and/or repair valves, hydrants, water main, meter pits, or any other devices that are associated with the water distribution system. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. The Finance Committee supports the investment of these funds to install valves on long runs, install meter pits at critical junctures, and implement other maintenance measures in order to meet the department's internal goal of less than 10% water system losses.
Mr. Knowles.
I move to transfer the sum of $30,000 from Water Enterprise Fund Stabilization Fund account to purchase and repair valves, hydrants, water main, meter pits, or any other devices that are associated with the water distribution system.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Once again, this involves a stabilization fund and requires a two-thirds vote. I'll take it in reverse order. All those opposed, please raise your cards. You should be.
You're a little crazy.
All those in favor, please raise your cards. It's unanimous. Article 8, to see if the town will vote in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 3, and every other lawful authority, to grant the Water Commissioners of the Town of West Newbury the right to use in common with others the existing 50-foot wide right-of-way for all purposes for which roadways could be used in the Town of West Newbury, and the right to use the proposed easement area equals 94,514 plus or minus square feet for Water Department purposes, all as shown on the plan of land entitled Proposed Easement Plan for the Town of West Newbury Water Department, West Newbury, Massachusetts, Assessor's Map 2, Lot 35, by Apple Associates, Inc., dated June 17, 2009, which plan is on file with the Office of the Town Clerk?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Not all those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. It's unanimous. Article 9, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $300,000 to be added to the stabilization fund. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee voted to approve this. The stabilization account is the town's savings account, and a systematic appropriation of funds to the stabilization account in conjunction with reevaluating our schedule for capital replacements and building repairs is an important pound, an important part of our sound fiscal standing. This account enables the town to pay for major expenditures from available funds, avoiding short-term borrowing. Annual funding also enables the town to spread out the cost of major purchases over a period of time, thus stabilizing the tax burden. This year, we were not able to fund the stabilization account from our operating budget without increasing taxes. That would have been above what was, we thought was desirable. Free cash, however, had an adequate balance, and therefore we agreed to appropriate from free cash.
Mr. Archibald.
Madam Moderator, I move to transfer from free cash the sum of $149,200 to be added to the stabilization fund.
Second.
Is there discussion?
Move one second over again.
$149,200. No discussion? Requires a two-thirds vote? All those opposed, please raise your cards. All those in favor, please raise your cards. It's unanimous. Article 10, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $21,191.73 from the septic loan revolving account for the repayment of debt service. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. In 2001, the town enrolled in a 20-year state finance program to help residents repair, rebuild septic systems that do not conform to Title V. This Mass. Department of Environmental Protection Program offers 0% loans to communities in which provide low-interest loans to homeowners whose septics have failed Title V. This amount is the repayment of principal to the program. The program has been closed, and the repayment will be complete in 2021.
Oh. Wrong person.
Madam Moderator, I move to transfer the, from the septic loan revolving account the sum of $21,191.73 for the repayment of the septic loan debt service.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. It's unanimous. Article 11, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $110,400 to pay for the debt service associated with the Dunn property acquisition. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. Two years ago, the town purchased a 71-acre Dunn property for $3.5 million. Shortly after the purchase, a 50% grant was received from the state, and that amount was deposited into a separate account to service the $1,775 debt. Each year, we transfer the amortized debt service amount from the dedicated grant account to the debt service line of the omnibus budget. This year, the debt service amount to be transferred is $110,400. This sum covers all but a minimal amount of interest to the bond folders. This loan will be entirely paid off by June 30 in 2020.
Mr. Anderson.
I move to transfer from the receipts reserve for the Dunn debt account the sum of $110,400 to pay the debt service associated with the Dunn property acquisition.
Is there any discussion? Not all those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. It's unanimous. Mr. Bridges from the Planning Board on the CPC wishes to make a report before the motion on Article 12.
On behalf of the Community Preservation Committee, I'm Rick Bridges, and in the interest of making the report brief, the committee will be referred to as CPC, and the Community Preservation Act will be referred to as the CPA. The CPA is a state statute which was adopted by West Newbury in 2006. Since that time, the town has collected approximately $1,871,455 as the 3% local surcharge, and a state match of $1,388,322. Because our surcharge is in the full amount of 3%, we're eligible for funds distributed by the Commonwealth in Rounds 2 and 3, which has resulted in close to a 100% match in some years, and an average of 75% overall. For fiscal year 2013, the Town of West Newbury received a full match for the revenues collected in the amount of $257,183 in matching funds from the state. For fiscal year 2014, the match was $166,120, which is a 63% match, and it is certainly worthwhile to be funded at the 3% maximum so we can receive...
sum of $21,191.73 for the repayment of the septic loan debt service.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. It's unanimous. Article XI, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $110,400 to pay for the debt service associated with the Dunn property acquisition. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. Two years ago, the town purchased a 71-acre Dunn property for $3.5 million. Shortly after the purchase, a 50% grant was received from the state, and that amount was deposited into a separate account to service the $1,775 debt. Each year, we transfer the amortized debt service amount from the dedicated grant account to the debt service line of the omnibus budget. This year, the debt service amount to be transferred is $110,400. This sum covers all but a minimal amount of interest to the bond folders. This loan will be entirely paid off by June 30 in 2020.
Ms. Anderson.
I move to transfer from the receipts reserved for the Dunn debt account the sum of $110,400 to pay the debt service associated with the Dunn property acquisition.
Is there any discussion? Not all those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. It's unanimous. Mr. Bridges from the Planning Board on the CPC wishes to make a report before the motion on Article 12.
On behalf of the Community Preservation Committee, I'm Rick Bridges, and in the interest of making the report brief, the committee will be referred to as CPC, and the Community Preservation Act will be referred to as the CPA. The CPA is a state statute which was adopted by West Newbury in 2006. Since that time, the town has collected approximately $1,871,455 as the 3% local surcharge and a state match of $1,388,322. Because our surcharge is in the full amount of 3%, we're eligible for funds distributed by the Commonwealth in Rounds Two and Three, which has resulted in close to a 100% match in some years, and an average of 75% overall. For fiscal year 2013, the Town of West Newbury received a full match for the revenues collected in the amount of $257,183 in matching funds from the state. For fiscal year 2014, the match was $166,120, which is a 63% match, and it is certainly worthwhile to be funded at the 3% maximum so we can receive the maximum amount of state match each year. Eleven projects totaling $1.8 million have been approved by voters to date. The category breakdown is 1.7 for historic preservation, $15,000 for affordable housing, and $72,000 for open space and recreation. CPC thanks the town residents and voters for their support of the Community Preservation Act.
Article XII, to see if the town will vote to allocate and/or reserve from the Community Preservation Fund annual revenues the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for community preservation projects, committee administrative expenses, and other expenses in fiscal year 2016, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation. From fiscal year 2016, estimated revenues for community housing reserve, $35,687; for historic resources reserve, $35,687; for open space and recreation reserve, $35,687; for committee administrative expenses, $16,472; for budgeted reserve, $233,341. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee voted to approve this. The state mandates that CPA funds are allocated annually. This article presents to the town the CPC-recommended distribution, which earmarks the required minimum 10% to each of the three categories: community housing, historic resource, and open space. To spend anything above that 10% would require additional approval at town meeting. This article also allocates funds for the committee administrative expense, which can be no greater than 5%. This estimation is 75% raised from CPA surcharge and 25% from state matching.
Mr. Bridges.
I move to allocate and reserve from the Community Preservation annual revenues in the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for committee administrative expenses, community preservation projects, and other expenses in the fiscal year 2015, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation. Do you need the numbers read again?
You can say as read by the moderator.
Okay, as read by the moderator.
Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your card. All those opposed, please raise your card. It's unanimous. Article XIII, to see if the town will vote to reauthorize the Summer Recreation Revolving Fund for the Park and Recreation Commission as described in Chapter Forty-Four, Section Fifty-Three E and a Half of the Massachusetts General Laws for fiscal year 2016. This revolving fund would be to accept receipts from fees charged to participants of the summer recreation program. The receipts would be expended not to exceed $40,000 in fiscal year 2016 by the Park and Recreation Commission for the payment of program-related wages, expenses, and field trips of the 2016 summer recreation program, or to take any other action relative thereto. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends approval of this, Madam Moderator. This article requests reauthorization of the Summer Recreation Program revolving account that was established last year at the town meeting. The account must be reauthorized every year. Expenses from this account are capped at $40,000 without additional authority from the town.
Mr. Flaherty.
I move to reauthorize the Summer Recreation Revolving Fund for the Park and Recreation Commission as described in Chapter Forty-Four, Section Fifty-Three E and One Half of the Massachusetts General Laws for fiscal year 2016. This revolving fund would be to accept receipts from fees charged to participants of the summer recreation program. The receipts would be expended not to exceed $40,000 in fiscal year 2016 by the Park and Recreation Commission for the payment of program-related wages, expenses, and field trips for the 2016 summer recreation program.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. It's unanimous. Article XIV, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Forty-Four, Section Fifty-Three F and Three Quarters, to authorize the town to establish in the Treasury a separate revenue account to be known as the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund, into which may be deposited funds received in connection with a franchise agreement between a cable operator and the town, or to take any related action relative thereto. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted to approve. Historically, all PEG funds received in connection with the franchise agreements between the cable operators and the town were deposited into the general fund. The PEG program mandates that these funds be allocated to specific expenses and projects. Having these funds within the general fund made proper identification and allocation difficult. Until recently, Mass. law did not allow for a dedicated revenue account to segregate these funds. However, recent clarifications within Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Forty-Four, Section Fifty-Three F and Three Quarters, have now created the provision which authorizes the towns to create this needed revenue account for any and all incoming PEG funds. This account will identify monies generated from this source and allow for proper allocation.
Madam Moderator, I move to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Forty-Four, Section Fifty-Three F and Three Quarters, to authorize the town to establish in the Treasury a separate revenue account to be known as the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund, into which may be deposited funds received in connection with a franchise agreement between a cable operator and the town.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. It's unanimous. Article XV, to see if the town will vote to authorize a revolving fund for fiscal year 2016 for the Cable Advisory Committee as described in Chapter Forty-Four, Sections Fifty-Three E and a Half and Fifty-Three F and Three Quarters of the Massachusetts General Laws. This revolving fund would be to accept funds received in connection with a franchise agreement between a cable operator and a municipality commonly referred to as PEG, Public Education and Government. The receipts would be expended not to exceed $55,000 in fiscal year 2016 by the Cable Advisory Committee for the payment of program-related wages, expenses, and equipment, or such other purposes as permitted by the statute, or to take any other action relative thereto. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted to approve. This article allows for two acts. The first act is to authorize the creation of a revolving fund for the PEG funds received by the town. The purpose of this revolving fund is to ensure that these PEG funds with mandated use be segregated from free cash. The second act is to establish the limit of $55,000 for funds expended within the 2016 fiscal year.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Kemper.
I move to authorize a revolving fund for FY2016 for the Cable Advisory Committee as described in Chapter Forty-Four, Section Fifty-Three E and a Half and Fifty-Three F and Three Quarters of the Massachusetts General Laws. This revolving fund would be to accept funds received in connection with a franchise agreement between a cable operator and a municipality commonly referred to as PEG, Municipal Education and Government. The receipts would be expended not to exceed $50,000 in FY2016 by the Cable Advisory Committee for the payment of program-related wages, expenses, and equipment, or such other purposes as permitted by said Section Fifty-Three F and Three Quarters.
Is there any...
Did I say 55?
You said 50.
It's 53. I thought you said 53. Did you?
So I have a 50, a 53, and I'm supposed to say 55. I apologize.
No, 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 it's 53.
Oh, 53. What did I say? I thought I said it right, too. 53.
I heard 53, but...
The receipts would be expended not to exceed... Well, I'll take a friendly amendment just to make sure that it's all right. It's a Section Fifty-Three F and Three Quarters. I mean, is that...
Does that clear it up?
55,000.
$55,000.
You said 50.
What did I say? My wife says I said 50, so I must have said 50. She's always right.
So, is it 55?
It's 55.
Are we all square? Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. It's unanimous.
Did I say 50?
Article XVI, to see if the town will vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Forty, Section Five B, to create a special-purpose municipal stabilization fund in order to fund future capital expenditures for school-related building projects, and to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $50,000 for such stabilization fund, or to take any other action relative thereto. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted to approve. It is expected that the high school will require a major renovation or replacement in upcoming years. In an effort to avoid a significant tax override at that time, it would be prudent to begin to set money aside each year for this purpose. It is expected that as the town retires debt, it will make equivalent payments into this fund to ensure growth in the savings without significantly impacting taxes. This method of saving for that project will allow for a steady and predictable tax impact over time, and help to ensure that the town has the needed funds at the time of the project. This article allows for the creation of the Special Purpose Stabilization Fund along with an initial funding of $50,000. This initial funding will come from free cash.
Ms. Anderson.
I move to vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Five B, to create a special-purpose municipal stabilization fund in order to fund future capital expenditures for school-related building projects, and to transfer from free cash the sum of $50,000 for such stabilization fund.
Is there any discussion? Yes. Oh, I recognize the word in the back.
Is this item allowed for all of our school properties, or can you clarify?
On the current Town Stabilization Fund, there is a schedule for paid school maintenance. So the intent of this article, we know that a future high school renovation and/or replacement will be coming. The Pennsylgate District is figuring that out. So the intent is to start saving now as debt is retired. We will just simply, instead of... So we have to stop paying $100,000 next year. We'll take that $100,000 and put it in the stabilization fund so that when the time comes to have to pay for the school, we will have to pay either nothing in terms of new taxes, or very minimal, as opposed to having a override.
This is... Because this is a stabilization fund, it requires a two-thirds vote. I'll take it in reverse order. All those opposed, please raise your cards. All those in favor, please raise your cards. It's unanimous. To see if the town will vote to... Article XV, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $5,000 for establishment of a special fund in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter Forty-Four, Section Fifty-Three I, for a celebration of West Newbury's bicentennial in 2019. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted to approve. State law allows for the creation of a celebration fund up to five years prior to the event. This article would allow for West Newbury to open such a fund along with its initial funding of $5,000 to be transferred from free cash. The town will form a bicentennial committee to develop and manage the celebration.
Ms. Archibald.
Madam Moderator, I move to transfer from free cash the sum of $5,000 for establishment of a special fund in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty-Four, Section Fifty-Three I, for a celebration of West Newbury's bicentennial in 2019.
Mr. Kemper.
I'm just going to preempt any questions, because if you're coming from Groveland, it says we were established in '17. Coming from Newburyport, it says '19. The '19 one is the true one. The '17 one is wrong.
Can we have a new sign?
We'll get a new... That's one of the bicentennial celebrations, is the dedication of a new sign on the Groveland end.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The ayes have it. Article XV, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $30,000 to the Cable Advisory Expense Account. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article. This article serves to place $30,000 into the new revolving PEG account that was established a few moments ago under Article XV. These monies have been received by the cable providers in town, namely Comcast and Verizon, and may only be used for local cable-related purposes, such as cameras to broadcast meetings, computers to store broadcasts, and wages of video personnel.
Madam Moderator. Mr. Kemper.
I move to transfer from free cash the sum of $30,000 to the Cable Advisory Expense Account.
Is there any discussion? Not all those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. It's unanimous. Prior to Article XV, there's a report from the West Newbury Main Street Solar, Mrs. Callahan.
We thought it was recognition of you all night. Madam Moderator, on behalf of the Energy Advisory Committee, I wish to report on a project we've been working on for the past few months to develop a Solarize West Newbury program. This program provides an option for town residents to install solar electricity systems at their homes. It's based on the state's Solarize Bass program, which has previously helped cities and towns to promote renewable energy. We have issued a request for proposals from vendors for residential solar PV systems, and we will be selecting a single qualified vendor to install systems at multiple West Newbury homes. And by doing so, we'll get discounted pricing compared to what would be available to an individual homeowner. Our plan is to select the qualified vendor in the next two to three weeks, and honor before June 12, hold a meet, the installer gathering, with interested residents. And the size of the discount will depend on how many people are participating. So far, we have heard that, from a few people who are interested, based on an article that appeared in the Daily News a few weeks ago, and we want to invite anyone in the town who may be interested in this group purchase of home solar installations to contact us. We have an email address, solarize@wnuberry.org, and to join us at the meet, the installer meeting, in early June, and this information is also available on the table to the side. Thank you.
Article XV, to see if the town will vote to ratify and approve an agreement made between the Board of Selectmen and West Newbury Main Street Solar, LLC, pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter Fifty-Nine, Section Thirty-Eight H, and regulations promulgated thereunder with respect to annual payments in lieu of real and personal property taxes over a 20-year period relative to a portion of a 129-acre plus-or-minus parcel of land located at 694 Main Street, West Newbury. Said pilot agreement is based upon the proposed construction and operation of a solar photovoltaic power plant with an expected nameplate capacity of approximately 440 kilowatts, and shall be executed in conjunction with the Massachusetts Solar Power Purchase Agreement executed on January 5, 2015, or take any other action relating thereto. What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. The 2013 Fall Town Meeting authorized the Selectmen to enter into a lease of the five acres west of the Page School, which has been designated as a solar overlay district. After an appropriate bid process, the Selectmen chose the solar developer, Emmeresco. Under lease agreements, anticipated that the solar energy generator will provide approximately 90% of municipal energy needs. However, there's some challenge in terms of assessing personal property tax on the solar array. However, this pilot agreement, which stands for payment in lieu of taxes, attempts to solve this problem by establishing a fixed sum of $5,786 to be paid to the town annually for the next 20 years. The pilot payment, together with the lease payments and net metering credits, will provide a conservative estimated benefit to the town of over $1 million over the term of the contract. The Selectmen have already signed the pilot agreement. However, Bond Council asks that the town ratify the pilot agreement.
Mr. Parker.
So this feels a little bit like Groundhog Day. This is the sixth vote, the sixth article and the sixth vote for this project, since it all started about three years ago with a couple of zoning bylaw changes. But I think this is the last one, and the way things are expected to roll out at this point, by August, we should have an operating system, and, you know, the town will be providing its own electrical power, and we'll be saving about $1.2 million over the course of 20 years. So, you know, I think it's a win for the town. So Article XV reads, "I move to ratify and approve an agreement made between the Board of Selectmen and West Newbury Main Street Solar, LLC, pursuant to MGL, Chapter Fifty-Nine, Paragraph Thirty-Eight H, and regulations promulgated thereunder with respect to annual payments in lieu of..." real and personal property taxes over a 20-year period relative to a portion of 129-acre plus-or-minus parcel of land located at 694 Main Street, West Newbury. Said pilot agreement is based upon the proposed construction and operation of a solar photovoltaic power plant with an expected nameplate capacity of approximately 440 kilowatts and shall be executed in conjunction with the Massachusetts Solar Power Purchase Agreement executed on January 5th, 2015."
Is there any discussion? Mrs. Hamilton.
I'm Deb Hamilton of Middle Street. Having just spent $30,000 on beautiful bridges that cross the Indian River down and to the left of where the new solar array is going, I would just request that consideration be given to maintaining the trail that crosses Main Street and is going to be turning left and following the Indian River, just for your future consideration, please. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The ayes have it. Article 20, to see if the town will vote to amend the West Newbury Town Bylaws by adding a new provision to Chapter 6, Animal Bylaw, Section 3.3.2, to wit. Section 3.3.2, "No person owning, harboring, or having custody and/or control of four or more dogs shall permit such dogs to run at large in the town of West Newbury at any time. A dog shall be deemed running at large when it is both off the premises of the owner or such person in custody or control of and is not on a leash or electronic leash collar, also known as an electric leash. Any violation of this section shall be considered a violation of restraining of dogs and subject to the fines and fees set forth therein." What is the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted to approve with one person abstaining. The current town bylaws require dogs to be leashed or under the immediate control of their custodian. The proposed change to the bylaw would state that any person with four or more dogs would need to have the animal leashed and under their control. There have been multiple occurrences on town property where professional dog walkers and related businesses are allowing for packs of dogs to run loose and out of their direct control. These instances have created disturbances to individuals utilizing that same public space.
Mr. Archibald.
Madam Moderator, I move to amend the West Newbury Town Bylaws by adding a new provision to Chapter 6, Animal Bylaw, Section 3.3.2, to wit. "No person owning, harboring, or having custody and/or control of four or more dogs shall permit such dogs to run at large in the town of West Newbury at any time. A dog shall be deemed running at large when it is both off the premises of the owner or such person in custody or control of and is not on a leash or electronic leash collar, also known as an electronic leash. Any violation of this section shall be considered a violation of restraining of dogs and subject to the fines and fees set forth therein."
Is there any discussion? Mr. Cook.
So to be clear, if somebody owns four dogs and goes to Mill Pond and lets them run off-leash, they'd be in violation. Is that correct?
Correct. And they would have an account, unless they only have four dogs.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. I think it's unanimous. Move to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Congratulations, everyone. We made it.